We will say, "Welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District, 13." School Board Meeting for Tuesday, June 26, 2018. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. Don, if you would, do read the roll call, please.
Palmer?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Deversen? Samurai? Superintendent Kelly?
Okay, thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools, create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the approval of the agenda. If I can get a motion to move that forward, please.
It's moved.
Lorian?
Second.
And Laura, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Announcements, June 28, at 7:00 PM, there will be a school board candidate forum held here in the community room. July 4, which is a Wednesday, the district office will be closed for the 4th of July. August 8, on a Wednesday, will be a regular school board meeting here in the community room. August 14, is the primary election. August 21, at 7:00 PM, will be a regular school board meeting here in the community room. And August 28, at 5:30, will be a school board work session just for the board members. Just, this was done in January, but the work session is on the 4th as opposed to the 3rd, Tuesday, so when you're looking at your calendars or thinking about what you would normally be doing, that's different. And then September 4, which is a Tuesday, is be the first day of school for our students. Superintendent does not hear, so assume there's no correspondence, you know of any? Okay. Next up would be communications to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Any blue sheets? Nope, okay. Next up would be the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report. We're looking for a motion to move that forward.
It's moved.
Molly?
Second.
And Laura? Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up would be the acknowledgements of contributions, and I have a resolution to read here, but I will ask for a motion, a second, and I'll read it and then open it for discussion, so if I get a motion to move it forward.
It's moved.
Molly?
Second.
Lorian? Okay. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefits of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated, in that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, it be resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background of the amount of $13,670.19. And the background and monetary includes a donation of $50 was made to Valley View Elementary by Jennifer Lane. A $50 donation was made to Valley View Elementary by Gina Anderson. $25 donation to Valley View Elementary by Kamari Hoglid for student needs. A donation of $100 was made to Valley View by David Dejarnette for Fun Run. A donation of $163 was made to Valley View Elementary for, by Carissa Gang for student needs. And a donation of $260 is made to Valley View Elementary by Kyle Paderusha for student needs. And then a donation of $1,000 was made to North Park Elementary by Philip and Arlene Cornball for student needs. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights Eat Up the Debt Campaign. Mayor Donna Schmidt, $120. Seema Madali, $100. Dominion Management Services, $500. American Relief Agency for the Horn of Africa, $600. Kathy Kelly, $100. Xena Stenvik, $100. Lisa Jenkins, $10. Kristin Carr, $10. George Holt, $60. Kelsey Ashes, $20. Nicole Kenny, $10. Kristen Kenny, $10. Dawn Hoyam, $20. Anonymous, $100. Heights Next, $240. Amanda Marquez Sullivan, $120. Anonymous, $20. Burnett, $20. Melan Pat Robinson, $50. Tamara Schmidt, $100. Community Grounds, $160. Nicholas and Brenna Zemet, $500. Anonymous, $189. Anonymous, $10. Highland Elementary School, $40. Robin Sheridan, $50. Nicholas Zemet, $25. Jennifer Klein, $50. Anonymous, $120. Community Grounds, $160. Ariane Kokas, $50. Chris Reynolds, $25. Joan Leonard, $50. Stacy Nakora, $25. Arlene Kandrowski, $25. Kristen Wilson, $100. Judy Haig, $25. Nicholas Zemet, $25. Anonymous, $25. Anonymous, $50. Sarah Schmiggy, $20. Jane Hartje, $20. Nicholas Zemet, $500. Anonymous, $189. Christine Poudne, $25. Ashley Hill, $10.69. Nicholas Zemet, $38.82. Columbia Academy Student Council, $200. Anonymous, $10. And then the following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Program. Cameron and Megan Nelson, $250. Jane Swinehart, $100. Betty and Nancy Christensen, $50. Roxanne Sorensen, $200. Columbia Heights Fine Arts Foundation, $3,000. And Devon Pullman, $200. Value and Kind, donation of bikes to Columbia Academy and Valley View Elementary School, Elementary Students by Columbia Heights Police Department and Wells Fargo for student needs, estimated value, $700. Total fiscal year 2017-2018 monetary contributions to date, $77,944.40. Okay, discussion, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, one comment, and it's correct on the paper, but misread George Holt donation was $600, not $60.
Oh, maybe it was $600.
But again, thank you, extremely generous of our community and the donations to the school. And a big thank you to all the folks who together went forward with the Eat Up the Debt Challenge, too. That's, we really appreciate that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, hearing no further discussion, Don, if you would, roll call.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye. Okay, carries. Next up is discussion reports and information items. Reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting. Laura, you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. Well, I guess probably the big event of the week was participating in the parade. It's always a good time to get out there, and the weather actually was very cooperative. It was a good time to be had by all. It was great seeing everybody out there. And I also attended the work-study session last week.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I attended the orientation for school board candidates last week, also attended the work session and the parade. And again, it was a really good turnout at the parade, and like Laura said, the weather was good. It was a fun night. I also have had many, many conversations with community members. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren?
I also attended the work session and also got to participate in the, in the jamboree parade, and I attended the fireworks as well. And just want to give a shout-out to the Lions and all the volunteers that put that together. It was such a great community weekend, and they really did a really nice job with that this year. Good for me.
Thank you. I also attended the school board candidate orientation, the work session last week, and then participated in multiple events for the jamboree weekend as well. So that concludes my report. Superintendent is not here, so we have no report from her, so we'll move right on to Item B, which is our communications plan update.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, good evening. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the 2014-2018 Comprehensive Communications Plan for the fourth year of the plan covering the period 2017-2018. As always, we start out with our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for every learner, partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. In terms of the core values as it applies to this, every single one of our core values ties into our communications plan. In terms of the alignment with our strategic roadmap, this aligns with Direction F, tell our story, brand development, reputation management to increase partnership and enrollment. As I've done the last three years, just to give a little background, the communications department was reestablished, I believe after 10 years, on July 1, 2013, and as part of bringing the program up, we had a National Schools Public Relations Association communications audit, which took place from November 2013 to May 2014. And from the, their findings, from the audit's findings, we used that to create the Comprehensive Communications Plan, and which we decided would cover a four-year plan, a four-year period. We presented that to the school board on June 10, 2014, and we activated July 1, 2014. And each June since, I have come to the, to the board to report out on our status. So in terms of the, the way we broke it out, there, I'm going to get into this a little more specifically, but this is how we broke out each of the four years with the introduction of programs that were brand-new. The introduction is those that we were actually bringing online for the first time. There were programs and different projects, et cetera, that were already in place but needed work on. These are programs that we introduced right from the get-go. In terms of focus, those are, again, programs that exist, but we, we brought priority in terms of the attention to them, and the maintain is, once task is operational, operationally sound, we ensure that it continues, but at the same time, doing our best to improve each one. So you'll see that in the first year, 2014-2015, we started out with three of the four recommendations that are on this page, and then followed up with the remaining five. So in terms of the Comprehensive Communications Plan, I think you all should have had this, but it, there's nine recommendations, which are also action items, which also could be considered as goals. And from those, within those, we had 35 strategies and 142 tactics to accomplish. So what I'm going to do is go through each one and give you the, the update. So Recommendation 1 was implement a strategic communication program that reflects best practices in school public relations. There are five strategies, 23 tactics. This was the first year, we achieved 12 of those, and of those, we have eight that are, have been achieved, but they're ongoing. So the achieve means that this was a one-time task, if you will, and that was achieved, bringing up the communications department. And then there were three that we did not achieve. Recommendation 2 was expanding, expanded culture of communication with six strategies, 17 tactics. We achieved seven. We have five that are ongoing and five that we did not achieve. Recommendation 3 was expanding outreach to parents and community, 11 strategies, 44 tactics. We achieved 14. We have 21 that are ongoing, in progress means that we're still building it. We had three that were not achieved, and I believe it was in the second year, we, the superintendent and I decided that there were five that we were not going to move forward, so they were suspended. Recommendation 4, create a crisis communications plan based on best practice. We had three strategies, 14 tactics. We achieved three of those, and 11 are ongoing. Recommendation 5, continue to integrate social media into the communications program. We have two strategies, 10 tactics. Of those, we have achieved six, and three are ongoing. Recommendation 6, expand the use of video as a communication tool. Two strategies, eight tactics. Achieved one, three are ongoing, one in progress, and three were not developed. Recommendation 7, continue to refresh, refresh the district websites. Seven strategies, 14 tactics. We achieved nine, three are ongoing, and one is in progress, excuse me. Recommendation 8, develop a marketing plan and incorporate effective marketing branding, branding strategies into communication plan, planning. Two strategies, eight tactics. Seven that are ongoing and one that was not achieved. And Recommendation 9, explore additional paths to engaging diverse populations. We had two strategies, four tactics, and four of those are ongoing. And in terms of the results, we had 51 of our tactics are achieved, 67 that are ongoing, two in progress. We initially started out with modified back in, four years ago, and did not do that, so there's zero. We had 16 that were not achieved and five that were suspended. And so what I did is that I broke this down based on those numbers. We had 120 of the 142 tactics that were met, which is 84.5%. And then I thought it was, I thought it was important to flush this out a little bit more. By eliminating the five purposely suspended tactics, the overall success rate rises to 88%. And then we had six tactics that were not met because of financial reasons. We just did not have the money to do it. And then that brings the adjusted overall rate to 92.25%. So that is the fourth and final year of the communications plan update to school board. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but a couple of comments. Just first of all, I always enjoy your presentations. I think some of the pictures are just always, I'm sorry, the pictures in your presentations, I just always appreciate seeing them. It's a nice snapshot of the year oftentimes, and just-
I know why you like them.
He didn't look very good in that picture. My son was in that mock car crash. But on a different note, I just appreciate all that you've done to connect our district on social media especially over the last few years, and just appreciate overall everything that you've done for this district, so thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to echo some of that. I had written down some comments. I think that I also appreciate the, the work that you did to help bring us to where we needed to go and identify areas that we need to continue to improve on, really adding a level of professionalism and continuity to what we're distributing, so it looks like we, it's developing our brand and have been able to professionally tell our story. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
I, I would love to echo everything here, but I actually did have a question. The, the five tactics that, that we didn't pursue because of financial reasons, could you remind me which those were?
Yes.
I know we had had discussions in the past about them.
One more, please. It had to do with the Speaker's Bureau, and, had to do with the Speaker's Bureau. There it is, Speaker's Bureau. And the reason that we didn't pursue it was that that works really well if you are in a very large school district, a large geography, and in terms of what their recommendation was, basically what that is, is that you're taking individuals within your school district community and using them to go out into the community and speak. And superintendent and I talked about that, that in terms of formalizing and organizing a structured program, at, with a school district this small and a, and our smaller community, it just was not efficient. But we can still accomplish that, those sort of objectives, but not in a more structured, formal way.
Okay, and I seem to recall a little bit, so thank you, and it is a lot.
Okay, anybody else? I would just concur, Casey. I remember when you first started here and the look on your face when you saw that one school had one logo and another school had another, and you were very adamant and insistent upon creating a common look for the district, and I think that that wasn't, is important. So, you know, I appreciate and applaud the fact that you, you recognized that that was something that was important for us, so thank you for doing that. And overall, even as far as the communication plans, the things we've done the last four years, as far as I'm concerned and from what I've seen previous to communication plan, we can always do more, but we certainly are doing a lot more than we were doing previously for that, and I attribute that, you know, the, some of the direct, well, the direction from, from you and your department, so thank you for that.
And I appreciate that you said "we," because even though that this is the, through the communications department, this is a comprehensive communications plan for the entire school district. And why, to agree, I guess you could say I drove the, the bus on this, it was a "we" accomplishment, and I, I remember back when the recommendations came out and the National School PR Association made it very clear to us, "Do not try to tackle all of this." And the superintendent said, "Let's do it." So I think that for the end results, we did all right.
I would agree.
So.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Metro ECSU membership.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, good evening. I'm here this evening to present on the Metropolitan Educational Cooperative Service Unit Membership. It's a mouthful, so we refer to it as Metro XU. Of course, we're here to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and I do believe that our membership with the Metro XU helps us to do, to do just that. This presentation are, will be focused on the core values of excellence and collaboration. So Metro XU, since 1976, has been helping schools fulfill their missions by delivering high-quality services while reducing costs through collaboration, so it's a true cooperative. There are many different services for educators through the Metro XU, including professional development in a variety of areas for teachers, paraprofessionals, and administrators. Also, extensive support for our student services and special education programs. They offer the para-pro assessment for our paraprofessionals. Success beyond the classroom programs for our students. District cooperative purchasing, so at a reduced rate. And then environmental health and safety, and this is support for walking through our buildings and grounds with kind of an outside view to get support and make sure that we're maintaining our buildings and grounds. So in the last school year, this is a breakdown of our participation in the Metro XU, and it does fluctuate from year to year, year to year, depending on our needs and their offerings. But the majority of their offerings remain the same, except for, of course, the professional development opportunities are, is what changes. So our E-12 professional development, along with the Metropolitan Principals Academy, we had 13 different sessions, people participate in that this year. 25 students participated in the Knowledge Bowl Student Program, a high school program. This year, we didn't have any EAs that, or educational assistants that needed the Praxis Para-Pro Assessment, so I left it on there. However, we did not utilize that service. Had there been a need, though, we would have. Six people utilizing the positive behavioral interventions and support. And then specific to our professional, specific to our special education staff, nine people utilized the professional development and support there. Of course, the annual class size study, they process that data for us, and then cooperative purchasing is something else that we utilized. So the, there's a flat rate for a membership, which is $700 plus 90 cents per pupil that is measured on that October 1 date. So the projected fee for Columbia Heights Public Schools for next school year is $3,689.80. With the amount of service that they offer, that cooperative purchasing, all of the professional development, support for special education, health and safety, I do think that it is a great value, that, that amount. So this evening, I'm just here to present that information to you, and I will be back on August 8, seeking action, and your recommendation, or my recommendation for you to approve our membership once again with the Metro XU.
Any questions?
Not so much a question as a comment. I think it's important to understand what Director Stenvik said. The, the, just the cooperative purchasing, I think, is, is a great savings. So looking at what we pay in a membership fee, and then the professional development. Professional development costs are very expensive, so by allowing some of our staff members to participate in the professional development that's put on through this organization. I've had the opportunity the last two years to attend their meetings as our representative. Really, again, it's a, it's a cost savings for us, and there's just numbers of teachers and other professionals that can take advantage of those, of those sessions. And so I, I really see a value to our district in looking at, at what we, what we pay for that service. And, and I think the other, the portion of that is, is what does this go to? I mean, there's a, there's a staff there that is coordinating, and there's the space that's available, the, the real estate where these things are happening is all part of that. So what we get for that value is, is very good.
Who else?
Just another, there's actually a lot of opportunities that they have for students there, which I was, I think there's, last I saw, there were like 25 or 30 different little things that students can participate in that are, that are education-related and, you know, beyond the classroom, you know? So I, I think it is a great value. It really is.
Anybody else? Thanks, Dana.
Thank you.
Next up is Northeast Metro 916 Special Education and Related Staffing Agreement. It's an information item tonight.
Right, good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board. Thank you for letting me come here and share with you a little about the Northeast Metro 916. This is an annual agreement that the board approves typically in August, at least that's what it was last, last year. And the purpose is for Northeast Metro 916 and Special Education, for them to provide special education and/or related services to students enrolled in and receiving educational services in Columbia Heights. And so just to give you guys a heads-up, we will be having 16 916 staff, or we do currently have 16 916 staff who provide services from blind, visually impaired services, to deaf and hard-of-hearing, to speech and language, to autism specialists. Additionally, many of our health care specialists, as well as our licensed school nurse, we contract through 916 to provide those services and that support at our schools. And so this is an informational item today, with the hope that in August, I will be bringing forth an action item for you guys to approve to allow them, 916, to continue to provide services for our students in Columbia Heights. And I believe in your board packet is the contract as well that's been signed by 916, too.
I'm looking at the resolution, the agreement. It's got a July 1 date. I'm assuming this is coming back August 8.
Yep.
Is that going to create an issue with the July 1 date, or?
It will not.
Okay.
It will not. We've, we've been in contact with them, and they understand that. And I believe last August, we had agreed, we had approved it, or the school board approved it last August, so.
Perfect, yeah, very good. Anybody else? See you on the 8th.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, John. Tri-Metro Conference Update.
Um, I don't have the action item in front of me for the Tri-Metro, um, update. No action? Oh, okay, so then I'll go straight to my slide.
That's just at the end.
Okay, fair enough. Um, our mission.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, thank you for having me. Good evening. Uh, obviously, we're here to create worlds of opportunities for every learner in partnership with support, supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. The core values that we'll be focusing on today are the top three: community, excellence, and collaboration.
Uh, our spring highlights, as you know, um, this, the weather this, this spring was not very cooperative. And so, we had to do a lot of work, um, in order to get our teams on the field, uh, in their sports and activities across, um, the state. But I think we did a great job of, of rescheduling and getting things put together very well. So, some of the highlights, uh, in, in lacrosse, uh, we had a good, good season. Melissa Hosh was 17th in state, in the state in scoring. She scored 39 goals. Aurora Wigley, uh, was second team, started trib for defense. We had a, a negative goal differential of, uh, negative 37, which was the fourth in Loweston School history, which is pretty good. And we increased our wins from last year. Softball, we had two All-State Academic Team selections, but we also had, um, we have a bright future. We have four Columbia Academy students on varsity, two seventh graders and two eighth graders. So, we're, we're, we're starting young. Oops. Go back, go back, go back, go back, go back. Synchro, speak to synchro.
Yeah, you can do that. Sam Alexon, uh, participated in the state tournament, um, for, I think, the long, we got it up there, no, the long solo, uh, performance, um, and she took 12th place. Um, we both attended that and that was pretty exciting.
Very exciting. I had an opportunity to sit in the University of Minnesota's, uh, swimming, uh, pool area for an entire day. It was pretty warm, but we, we, we figured it out. It was pretty cool. Uh, spring highlights for baseball, Isaac Becker, 10th grader, all-conference. Aaron Seaweston, 10th grader, all-conference. Amira Davis, 11th grader, honorable mention, and Aiden, and?
Aiden.
Aiden Smirnek, 11th grader, honorable mention. Track, um, Fatu Mahin, Keon Lewis, and Kenny Moore, all-conference. Two 12th graders, 11th grader. Boys tennis?
Uh, yeah, boys tennis, we had Elie Azid Chaboub and Nehemiah, two bears. Uh, Elie Azid got all-conference and Nehemiah was, uh, honorable mention.
Spotlight Awards, uh, in drama, we had an opportunity, um, our, um, Spitfire Grill was, uh, our drama that was this year, our spring musical. Um, overall, the students did, did very, very well. Um, and so, we were awarded, um, for honorable mention for overall technical team, uh, acting performance by an ensemble, outstanding performance in supportive role, uh, performance in a leading role, honorable mention. And the three students, Izzy, Raiden, Alex Jones, and Anaya Stephensmore. In addition, um, they competed, um, participated in the Spotlight Awards, um, down in the, um, City Theater, um, down in Minneapolis. So, it was, it was great for them to see. Tri-Metro, um, 2018, 2019, we have ten participants, St. Anthony Visitation, St. Croix, Holy Angels De La Salle, Fritley Brook and Center, and Concordia and St. Agnes. Over the last seven months, um, there's been discussion within the group about two, um, two schools leaving the Tri-Metro. And so, in 2000, can I go back? Thank you. 2019, 2020, Concordia Academy and St. Agnes will be leaving the Tri-Metro. Uh, we are adding Richfield, it was a unanimous vote, to add Richfield. Most of us already, um, have opportunity to play and participate, um, in activities with, with Richfield, so we all feel that it was a, a light connection. Uh, we are also looking to add another school. There've been many discussions, but at this time, nothing has been concrete, so it may be another year before we have that decision. So, right now, we'll go with the nine in our, in our group. Um, the next few slides are some of the action shots that we had over the year, um, especially toward the end of winter, but also in the beginning of the spring, um, with our state wrestlers and state basketball. College signings, um, we had two students, uh, four students going to, um, NIAC, North, Northern Iowa Area Community College for basketball players. Um, we had two football players also sign. Manny Ramirez signed at St. Cloud and, uh, another student signing at?
Uh, why can't I think?
Yoel?
Yeah. North Dakota.
Chirlacroma, yes. He also signed with North Dakota School of Science. One act in Spitfire, um, th, this was an opportunity for the students to, to really show their, their, um, expertise in, in drama and it was, it was fun to watch, fun to see and the students did a great job. Artistic views, um, these paintings, one on the left from Minnesota at the bottom, was by a middle school, uh, middle school student, um, and one on the right was by a high school student. Expressions, um, again, the paintings, uh, on the left, uh, was by, um, elementary school in North Park, as well as our pictures on the right, as well as the students singing. State High School League's choir.
Yeah, so we had a couple, or quite a few, um, participate in the solo ensemble. Um, and we had three students from choir that received, received superior ratings. Annika Duckwall, Emily Valet, and Cleo Kibitsky, um, all got superior ratings in choir. And then Not Pictured is Ellie Saldana Hallworth, uh, she received a superior rating in band. So, that took place April, mid-April, April 7th, maybe? So, that was pretty exciting.
Comment?
I'm just curious, and I don't mean to put you guys on the spot, but what percentage of our students this year participated in athletics or activities after school? Do you guys have a?
Yeah, we, you know, I, I talked about that, uh, in fall, I believe, and I want to say, um, the number was around 71 or 72 percent. But I, don't quote me right now, but I will get that back to you.
Okay, thank you. I know that, um, to me, it felt like, um, just a larger percentage than normal. I know that it certainly has increased over the years.
Mm-hmm.
And I appreciate that. I think that our school does provide so many different opportunities and it's great to see all the kids here after school when you come at seven o'clock and there's just a lot of, you know, action still going on.
You know, I think that had a lot to do with, you know, the students, um, wanting to be successful, adding pieces to their lives versus, you know, just, um, the academic piece, which is very important. But after school and, and having their coaches and having something else involved, I think it was huge. Along with the fact that, you know, our coaching staff, um, and our departments as well, they are here for every single student and they enjoy working with the kids as well. Um, and so, that's been helpful. And then when you add, um, those two pieces together and the work that I think Jake and I have tried to do with getting more people involved, I think you add it all. I think it's, it's growing and that's, that's the key.
Yeah.
I know that, especially in the spring, we had a lot of, uh, student athletes out for sports, um, and I wasn't in it last year, but, uh, the coaching staff said, like, track in particular, um, we still had some drop-off at the end, but, uh, coming out, there was, you know, a huge chunk of middle schoolers. Um, and like Mr. Harris had, said, uh, that's the work of the coaches. They work at the middle school and they got all those kids to come out. And so, a lot of our spring sports, um, in particular, were filled with a lot of middle schoolers and, uh, the work of those coaches, just hyping those, uh, sports can only, uh, make, uh, our future even, even better and hopefully more and more, uh, student athletes come out. So, I don't have your specific number though for you right off the top of my head.
We'll, we'll get that specific number to you.
Thank you for all that you guys do too.
Really, thank you. I, like Molly said, I mean, there's just so many kids that are involved in activities and I, I appreciate that we offer, uh, a variety of activities for our students, whether it be in athletics or in Knowledge Bowl or, um, future problem solving or, um, you know, even through the encore program. There really just is something for everybody and I think, um, our students have a challenge of trying to decide. Um, it's not, can I do something? It's what am I going to do? And I, even my own kids struggled of, can I do encore or theater or sports or, you know, this after-school activity or student council? I mean, there's just so many opportunities for students to get involved and to do something more, there's choices. Um, and I never felt like students were told they couldn't do something. So, like, I, I look at the, the Synchro team and we have, what, six middle schoolers on, on the team doing it for the first time, going out and trying something new. Um, so, it's kind of fun to see, um, students who are just taking the risk and trying something they've never done before and, and being successful at it. So, thanks for your encouragement and support of students.
I think the biggest thing with the middle school students is, is truly getting down there and getting them involved and pulling them up. Um, and so, we've, we've done a, a decent job of, of trying to get them involved and saying, yes, it's, time is now. Um, and that's how you build a program and how I see it. So, not just in Synchro, but in other programs like we talked about in softball. Um, they're younger, they're coming up, they're participating. But the piece that's very important is the adults in different sports and activities are encouraging the students, don't just do this, but also participate in that. And I think, you know, pushing that piece out there is very huge sometimes and some places you may get, you know, pull and tug, uh, with different sports and activities and they have to choose, but they don't here. So, they, they can do more than one. And so, it's supported by all. So, I think it's a collective effort.
And just one other thing, um, I think that the collaboration between the middle school and the high school, um, I, I've seen it over the last few years, just grow tremendously. And yes, we've had some great opportunities with some state tournaments, but bringing the middle school kids up for the pep fest, um, and, and getting them to feel like they're kind of already a part of this. I feel like when we have the games now and more of the youth nights, um, we have more of those students showing up so they know what to look forward to. And I think that's part of the energy that we're seeing.
One of the, uh, really exciting things, and this was brought on, um, I think mostly by our coaches, is we brought, like, our football team played up their last game. The middle school football team played up here. Uh, baseball and softball both played up here in their last game. Um, and I think we've had opportunities to do that for some other sports and, uh, just for them to get that vibe of what high school, uh, what the high school field is like, um, and get a score, like a big scoreboard, uh, for baseball, which they don't have, or for football. So, um, it's, it's been fun trying to grow that.
It, it's been talked about before, but I think worth noting again, I mean, we talk about, you know, state entrance and the athletics and the different, you know, honorable mentions there. Um, the, the programs you were talking about, whether it was with the art or the theater or the music, a superior rating is the equivalent of a state recognition. And I think it's important that people understand that when they talk about, um, on all those things, you know, all the kids you were talking about tonight, in, at least on that side of things are, that it's, that's the equivalent of the state tournament or the state competition. So, yeah, our kids are excelling, not in just athletics, but in, in these programs as well and it, it shows, so, um, and I think that that's great. I just want people to know that that's, you know, a big deal for those kids too, to be getting those, you know, the silver keys or whatever they're called for the art stuff. So, um, nice job, both of you.
It is, it is. I, I mean, I, it's, it's, and you're absolutely correct. And so, um, you know, it, being the end of the school year, I wanted Jake to come up here with me, um, just because we, we work hand in hand. Uh, we've had a good year together and so, I think we'll continue to grow things in the department, but it's, it's huge to be able to work well and work together and, um, be successful. And I think we're, we're on that track.
Thank you. It's been a fun year. Thanks. Okay. Um, next up would be our action items. The first one would be the, uh, resolution for the Minnesota State High School League Membership. Can I have one?
Yes. Um, every year, um, we have to, um, take part in the membership in the Tri-Metro. Um, and so, this would be an, uh, Minnesota State High School League, yes, sorry. I'm off my point today. Um, Minnesota State High School League, um, every single year and then, and which is expected from every school, every school district. And so, that is to be expected from us as well.
Okay. And it's a resolution, so I'll ask for a motion a second. I'll read it and then open it for discussion.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Laura. And the resolution reads as follows: Resolution for 2018-19 Membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Resolve that the governing board of school district number 13, county of Anoka, state of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic fine arts events referred to in Minnesota Statute Section 128(c)(01) to the Minnesota State High School League. And so, hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided by, as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolve that Columbia Heights High School is authorized by this, the governing board of said school district, to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and participate in the approved interschool activities sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolve that is, that this governing board hereby adopts the Constitution bylaws, rules, and regulations of said league and all amendments thereto as the same are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook, on file at the office of the school district, or as appears on the league's website, as the minimum standards governing participation in said league-sponsored activities, and that the administration has responsibility for determining student eligibility and for supervision of such activities are assigned to the official representatives identified by the governing board. Hearing none. This would be a roll call. Don, please?
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up would be our External User Access Recertification System Official with Authority.
Uh, every year, the Minnesota Department of Education requires us to, um, name the external, external user access person for the recertification system. This, um, action item would name Superintendent Kathy Kelly as the external access system authorizer. And basically, uh, most of the systems for the Department of Education have gone online and, um, the way that they can track who's authorized and who's not authorized to utilize those systems is to have this in place. So, annually, um, they will be sending out emails to the person that the district authorizes and that person's responsible for going through and verifying that they're, um, they're still active employees and you still want them to have access. Um, so, the recommendation and the action item request is to name the superintendent as the external access, um, person for MDE.
Okay. Motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Who's more in?
Holly.
Question?
Oh. What? Sorry.
Okay. Hearing no discussion, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstand? Motion carries. Next up is the 2018-2019 Budget.
Thank you. Um, Chair Larkin, members of the school board, um, at the last school board meeting, the budget for the school district was presented as an informational item. And this evening, I'm here to ask you to approve the 2018-19 budget, um, for the next school year.
Is there a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura? Discussion or questions?
I have some.
Mm-hmm.
We knew about what's gonna happen, right? Um, one that we need to use bigger print next time. Um, so, just looking at some clarifications, so, um, and, and really for those that are in our audience and that are, are watching at home, um, looking at, we are showing a change in the, in the fund balance of a negative $630,000.
Correct.
So, and, and that's something that as a board, that we have discussed, knowing that even with some of the cuts that, that have been made, that we're, we're dipping into the fund balance in order to operate. I, I think it's important to, to start the conversation now, as we look at that, this is not sustainable as we continue to move forward. So, really looking at, at, at how we can continue to operate over the next several years, why, by not dipping into the fund balance, because it just, it can't go any lower. And we've, at, per board policy, have designated what that fund balance needs to be, and, and we're, and we're there.
Right. The school board policy for fund balances, to keep it between six and 12 percent, and the board's direction was to maintain programs, so make the reductions in positions and expenditures, and try to keep the fund balance target between seven and eight percent. And that's what this budget that's presented should do.
So, I, I wanted to be clear that with this, showing that the neg, the, the negative change in the fund balance, you're still meeting our expectations of what we've directed in terms of that where the fund balance is at, and, and retaining the programs
Correct.
that we have in place, and making the cuts that we did make in order to effectuate that change. You know, there are obviously lots of, of costs, and when you look at the unassigned portion of this budget, we're looking at revenues of 33 million, and expenditures of, of, you know, again, 33 million, it's just about $600,000 difference. But, and, and again, this, this unassigned, can you, for those folks that not know, talk a little bit about, I mean, that's a large number, 33 million dollars. What, what generally lives in that category?
Right. So the general fund is where most of the activity in the school district happens. And the general fund unassigned balance is where almost everything happens, unless it's restricted. So, the general expenditures for classroom teachers are in there. The general expenditures for classroom supplies are in there. General expenditures for, you know, smaller capitalized items, computers, those types of things. So, insurance for the, for the school district, miscellaneous costs like that, are all in the general fund assigned balance. The assigned restricted are more the compensatory aid, the title programs, on the long-term facility maintenance, things that you, you have the money available to you, but they're very specifically designated of what you can spend it for.
Looking a little bit further, the long-term facilities maintenance, I mean, we're projecting that we are going to be at a negative $138,000 as of now, and ending June 2019 at negative 139,754. What's the reason for that?
That's a timing issue. You always certify to the state in, in different years than when you actually expend the money. So it's always just a timing difference, that if the program would ever end, you'll, you'll end up zeroing out. But there's always a difference just in timing from year to year.
Okay. And then, I've got lots of notes, but one more question. Under the community service fund restricted, assigned, our community ed and ECFE, our expenditures are higher than our revenues. Why is that?
We have some fund balance to begin with the, in the year. And so, based on programmatic needs and programmatic things that the department wants to do, they can go into those fund balance amounts. And that is something that the community education director has a, a community,
Advisory council.
Thank you. Community, couldn't think of the word. Community advisory council that they review that with.
And those funds are, are, I mean, they're restricted. So the community ed funds go to community ed, and the ECFE funds go to ECFE. So because they've got some fund balance there, they can spend it. It's not like it can go somewhere else.
Right, exactly. The only type, the only way funds like that, just so people know that they could move, is typically, in those areas, it would almost have, it would have to be legislation. Yeah.
So, just overall, our change in fund balance is just under $650,000. Bottom line, negative, is, is where we'll be for this year. And so, what then, again, looks at is, is the board providing direction on how we can continue to provide the programs and services, and have the staffing levels that we have, and, and work within our, our budget. And that'll be a, a big goal, a big, a big ask moving forward.
Right. And it's interesting to note that the governor's emergency funding that he requested would have essentially wiped that out. It would have been a break even. So, really, the 2% extra that he asked for would have, after the budget cuts that we implemented, made this a break even budget. So it, it'll be really important to watch what's done at the legislator, and to advocate legislature, and to advocate for the funding that's needed.
Again, thank you for your work on putting this together, and working through our expectations. I appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
That's all I have.
To build on the last piece you talked about, again, so people understand, I brought it up, and we've talked about it multiple different times. But if you were to, to list one particular barrier that would be the largest, and is creating, you know, the $600,000 negatives, what would that be?
It would be the special education cross-subsidy. It's over $5 million each year that the district is paying to cross-subsidize special education costs. So, the federal and state government are not reimbursing what they had promised to reimburse for that mandate. And, and it is a mandate, so there isn't anything that you, or I, or staff here can do to minimize, you know, to get rid of those costs. It's something we have to do. So if, if there were legislative action to help relieve those costs, every school district in the nation basically would, would be better off, and would have a better financial situation.
Yeah, so we're not alone. Obviously, we're not the only district. But, is, the, for simplified terms, we're mandated to do certain things that, specifically in this conversation, is special education. We were told that we were going to be somewhat subsidized for...
They said they'd, about, or 40% of the cost would be paid for by the federal.
Forty percent. So we were gonna eat 60% of it. How much have they covered?
I believe the highest it's ever been here was 15%, and typically, historically, it's been less than that. So it's a big gap.
We're funding 85% of a mandate that we can't change.
Right.
So, okay. So, just so people understand, there's obviously some true struggles that all districts are going through when it comes to budgeting. And Lauren brings up an excellent point, that we have policy that, that directs where we need to be with our fund balance. And it is a big ask, as to, you know, making sure that we, we stay within that. But there's reasons behind it. It's not, we're, we're spending the monies we're supposed to, on the things that we're supposed to. We just aren't getting some of the monies that are supposed to be coming in. So.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none. This is an action item to approve the budget. So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up is worker compensation insurance renewal.
Chair Larkin, members of the, members of the school board. This was brought to you last school board meeting as an informational item. And it's our request to review the workers' compensation renewal from our current carrier, United Heartland, for fiscal year 2019. Our mod factor is currently at 1.01, so it's almost at the standard of, of what a regular school district should be. The renewal cost is $180,575, which is a 7.2% decrease from the year before. Again, because our mod factor has declined and gotten better. So, we would request approval to renew our workers' comp insurance with United Heartland.
Okay. If you're looking for a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Lauren.
Second.
And by Laura. Discussion. Question? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Out of state and overnight field trip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't know what I did to this poor computer.
Chair Larkin, members of the board. Recently, we were presented with information on a proposal for an overnight in-state field trip for Valley View fifth graders. This would be the first time that we've done this particular field trip to the Audubon Center of the North Woods, that's located in Sandstone, Minnesota. The proposal is for next spring, three days, two nights. Really exciting and fun activities that the students can do around environmental education, including team building, wildlife training, cultural history, Minnesota ecology, and STEM renewable energy practices. We are, I am here seeking approval this evening for this field trip, so that the school staff can go ahead and get started with securing the dates, planning and preparing, making sure parents have the advanced information. Parents have the option to opt out, and we would provide alternative curriculum if need be. We're looking at different funding sources, including the school field trip funds that they are allocated each year, and potential donations and fundraising. So again, I'm here seeking approval for this field trip proposal.
Okay. If you're looking for a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Molly.
Second.
Laura. Discussion.
We talked about this when you had brought it up initially for us, but, you know, it's something that, that is optional.
Yep.
And that also does align with the curriculum for the fifth grade.
The science in particular.
Yes, the science curriculum. So this is curriculum-driven, albeit an opportunity for experiential learning, hands-on, that sort of thing, but still curriculum-based and aligning with our standards.
Correct. The science teacher at Valley View's been very involved in this proposal. And would be, you know, preparing the students with the curriculum in advance, leading up to it.
And I heard before that you guys are committed to making, making sure this is very affordable for everybody, so that the fundraising will cut down costs for every student.
Correct. And, so it would be, it would be a combination of, you know, fundraising, donations, and then the school allocated field trip funding.
So students will not be turned away from going if the funds are not available?
Absolutely not. That's not a practice that we do in this district. We're looking...
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we're looking at $112 per student for the three days and two nights, in plus transportation costs.
And, and that this isn't something that, and we talked about this last time when you brought it up, but looking at the, at the donations and fundraising portions of that, that this isn't going into a line item budget? So that, you know, as we're already looking at making cuts and, and different things, that this isn't affecting that either?
Absolutely not.
And then I know Member Louis had, had asked the, the previous time, this is just for Valley View this year, much like we do when we start new things, try it.
Pilot.
Yep, and see. And then, so this is a potential that if this goes well, it might be something to be offered to other schools?
I would think so. Yes. That's, you know, we're starting off with our pilot, and if, as we study our pilot programs, then the ideas that we replicate out. I just know that I had the opportunity as a fifth grader to go to an environmental learning center, and it's, it can be really life-changing for students. That team building, that community building, the memories that you make, it's just a different type of hands-on learning. So, thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I hope you're still there. The S. Grant.
Chair Larkin, members of the board. Recently, I presented to you information on our preliminary budgets for our federal entitlement programs, so Title I, II, and III. Title I is really dedicate, funding dedicated towards school improvement, in a variety of, the funding can go towards a variety of different things. Mostly, we fund it, we help to offset the costs of funding our staff, and some of the supplies that go along with that. Title I funds are allocated based on our free and reduced lunch count. As I mentioned previously, the entire state of Minnesota, these are federal dollars, the entire state of Minnesota has received less funding this year, in, because in comparison to other states, we are a little bit more economically robust. And so other states that are not as economically robust received more funding this year than we did. So it's, there's a slight decline in the preliminary projected funding, that's not due to the district by any means. It's a statewide allocation. Title II is dedicated funds towards professional development, which is, you know, ongoing, continuous improvement, much-needed development. And then Title III, there, the funds there are allocated, are generated based on the number of students that qualify as English learners in the district. And the funding for Title III is quite strict on what you can and cannot use it for. So again, I'm here seeking these numbers. Each year, they, you know, when we get there, our October 1st counts, they shift a little bit and, and change. But as I presented to you previously, what the funds would be dedicated for, again, largely for staffing, as we're in a budget crunch in our general fund. So I'm here seeking approval for these preliminary budgets.
Motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Lauren.
Second.
Molly. Discussion.
I just want to reiterate something that, that you had said as well. I mean, these are very directed in terms of what these funds are, are used for. So I do appreciate the time that you had put forward to, to share that with us. But each, each of the, the Title I funds are very specific in what they can be used for.
Yep, it's dedicated towards school improvement. This is something that we have to submit a long narrative and budget to the Department of Education on September 1st, every year. This is also something that we are required to have parent input on those plans for each of the schools in the district. So we do that in early August. So yeah, there's a lot of guidelines. I have seven binders upstairs of compliance work on this one. Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a clarification. I know, we, we approved this initial budget here, and then you're gonna submit that, and then that goes through MDE before, before they release it. And then they would have input. I, I know we've never had input. They've never come back and said that our plan wasn't good, which is awesome. But I'm just, I'm just wondering about that process there, because we're approving...
You, so, the board needs to approve a preliminary budget in order for us to proceed to have those parent meetings. So, these numbers came directly from the Department of Education.
Okay.
As a preliminary budget for board approval.
Okay.
And, and so then that's what we use to plan, and when we have those parent meetings, talk to the parents, like, this is what we have, you know, these are the guidelines that's submitted through their, their electronic system to the Department of Education, yes.
Every one of them has a different policy and how it goes through, so.
They do, slightly different, each one.
That's why you're in charge of that. Thanks.
Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. LEA authorization.
All right. One more for me. Chair Larkin, members of the board. I'm here this evening seeking approval to name me as the Columbia Heights Public Schools LEA representative for reviewing and filing the title grants for the upcoming school year. This would give me the permission to upload that inform, the plan, the budget, the narrative to the Department of Education.
And LEA is local education agency, and you would be our representative.
Correct.
Start with a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Second.
Lauren and Molly. Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up would be the MSBA membership. This is an annual membership that we have subscribed to. I think the big things that I feel like are the strengths of the MSBA membership is, is all of our policy. They provide us with the draft policies based on legislation and things like that. And then we take those, and we go, and we look at them against ours. So, there's really good guidance and direction from the MSBA piece on the policy part. I know that there's opportunities for professional development on a pretty regular basis with them as well. Again, it's, it's a membership we've had for quite a while, and I think that it's a, it's a good thing to look at. This particular membership for this year is $8,226. The dues for our district are based on $3,359.85. Every, average daily membership of students served, so I look at student base for the fiscal year, ended June 30th. Membership dues last year were $7,971, so there's a slight increase there. So...
Do we know why that increase is there?
It's based on the, the student count. It's the average daily membership of students served, so the number up, so that the dollars would go up. would go up. And then the fee for the MSB policy service renewal, $685 for this year. It was $675 last year, and the recommendation would be is that we renew both the membership and the policy renewal, which would be a total of $8,911. So I'll start with a motion to move it forward, and then we'll have discussion if there's some.
So moved.
Laura.
Second.
Lauren. And discussion?
I apologize, I thought we were already in discussion, I didn't mean to...
I kind of started as a discussion, that's my bad, so. You followed me down that path, so.
We've had a few motions so far.
Any other discussion?
Just, go ahead.
Okay, okay. The professional development alone through this membership is really pretty invaluable, and the conference every year, we get that free of charge, you know, doesn't cost the district anything at all to attend that conference and have access to all of that information, be able to collaborate across districts and find out what other districts are doing. It's a wonderful learning experience. So that's, I'm just putting another little benefit on there, so.
Laura.
Yeah, I think, one, I do feel like the policy service is very helpful. You know, there's a lot of board policy, and it's helpful to have a second set of eyes or resource on that. I also think that MSBA has provided a resource, even if, you know, I've had questions in terms of can my board do this, or can I do that, or, you know, looking for some of that mentorship and training, and it's been a valuable resource in addition to the training that we take as new board members to provide an overview. So, you know, I continue to watch this, I mean, it is, it's an expense, but I do see the value, but I think we need to continue to evaluate it as well.
Anybody else? Hearing no further discussion, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up would be the Appointment of Board Representation Subcommittee on Policy. I asked the superintendent to put this on the agenda for an action item. Currently on the policy committee is Member Palmer, Member Samurai, and myself. And what I've asked is for to put Vice Chair Severson in place of myself, so I can take a step back from that. And that's what the purpose of the suggested change is tonight, but it is something that in January, as part of our organization meeting, we approve as a board, so we would need to approve that change tonight here. So I'll start with a motion to move that forward, and then we can, we didn't do discussion that time, Molly just presented it, but.
So moved.
Molly.
Second.
And second for Laura. And any discussion on that?
Is Natty aware of this appointment?
She is. She will be when she gets back.
Just wanted to make sure she was aware.
You miss a board meeting, you volunteer for everything.
Yes, she is. Already not, later.
Yeah, I know she is.
Good question. Fair question. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries. And next up will be the Safe School Resolution. Brian is coming up.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, before you this evening, we have our resolution of commitment to school safety and security. It's a resolution and conversation that we've had over the course of a few board meetings, and this evening, I'd like to present it as an action item for approval.
If you're looking for a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Second.
Molly, oh, no, Laura was the motion. Molly was the second, thank you. I'll read the resolution. From the Board of Education, Commitment to Safe School Safety and Security, the resolution reads as follows, "All students deserve safe, welcoming, supportive school environments where they can learn and thrive without fear. No family should send a child to school in fear that the child may not come home. Therefore, in Columbia Heights Public Schools, we commit to a focus on safe school environment and to provide safe and secure facilities for students and staff. We commit to a strong collaborative relationship with local police, fire, and emergency responders. We commit to a safe environment for students to ask questions and openly express their worries and concerns, and we commit to helping staff to identify students in need and making sure that students are connected to the resources needed to help prevent students making a sudden tragic decision. And we commit to programs and services to support student mental health, social, emotional learning, and combat bullying and harassment. And we commit to training for school employees and emergency preparedness. Now therefore, be resolved, the Columbia Heights Public School Board publicly affirms its dedication and continued commitment to best practices and policies regarding the safety and security of all students, families, and the employees in our district." Discussion?
We've had many conversations about this resolution, and as Director Henneken said, this came up a couple of months ago. I appreciate all the time that the admin team has given to this in taking the direction from the board that we wanted this to look like. And I just want to make sure and underline that the district is doing these things. It's not that we're asking them to start anything, and that at the end, when we talk about the policies, that as a board, we're committed to making sure that we continue to look at those best practices as a district as well.
I think what we had talked about when we came up with this, it was, we are doing these things, but we always need to keep them in our sights, and to provide the policy and the goals to continue to provide best practices and policies as we move that forward, that it, and what we wanted to make sure is that there wasn't a feeling of complacency, and that we were going to be dedicated and commitment, I mean, the commitment is in that throughout, that we are committed to that, and committed to the best practices. I also wanted to mention too, it's challenging because there's only four of the six of us at this table, but this version is something that specifically after our last full board meeting that we brought back to the work study, and this was something that we all discussed and really worked together and collaborated on and got to where we are. And so I do feel comfortable that this is something that we made sure that all of us were in agreement with before moving it forward.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay, this is a resolution, so, Dawn, if you would, roll call, please.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Euler?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Do they have anything for board topics? We will adjourn our meeting at 8:19. Thanks, everybody.